I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd like to open the meeting with public comments. If anyone has anything to say, we ask that you accept the vote and give us your name and address so that we keep everything for the records. Keep it three minutes. Sam?
Sam Sweller, 4492 Bob Road. I am the commander of American Legion Post 301 in Austintown. This is Mr. Paisak, Phil Paisak, also a member and also a member of Catholic clergy. I know everybody's aware of what goes on at a lot of our professional football games, as you would call them, by certain individuals kneeling when they're doing the National Anthem. Well, you know, veterans really take an offense to that, and most people know why, you know. The men and women in this country go out and they sign a certificate to the United States government, you know, to serve their country. And a lot of them don't come back, and a lot of them that do come back, they have a lot of problems and whatnot. It's kind of a touchy situation with me, so you have to bear with me. But that flag stands for a lot of things. It doesn't stand for what these individuals are kneeling on. That country stands for our Constitution and our way of life. Ignorant and hateful people are doing what they do, and that's going to be around, sorry to say. And our system of government may not be the best in the world, but being military people, if you travel to other countries, you'll find out it's the best gig going, if you've been to other countries. So, in our system, it doesn't. It might not work as fast as some people want it to, but it does. And to the men and women who serve our country, whether it be in our forces or police departments or our fire department, you know, they take us all on note to defend that country and that flag. And it came to us, an individual in our county, he took it upon himself to, I don't know if you could say boycott or whatever, not get involved with the local grounds organization until they changed their policies. Along with a lot of American Legion posts up in that area, we said they would not show their games until they did. And this gentleman here is our own Mahoney County Sheriff, Jerry Green. And on behalf of the American Legion certificate appreciation, I respectfully present Sheriff Jerry Green, Mahoney County Sheriff's Office, in recognition of the sincere dedication of outstanding service and assistance which contributed to the advancement of the American Legion and its program and activities dedicated to God and country. Austintown Memorial Post 301, Department of Ohio, September 27, 2017.
Thank you very much. You want to?
Yeah, you want to say something?
Well, this thing I knew, you know, the decision when I made it to do that, it was not... To me, it was simple. It was about our veterans. It was about our American flag. It was those who gave their lives, came back injured. Let's not forget the ones that come back that have post-traumatic stress injuries that we can't see. To me, the National Anthem is two minutes' stand. Stand for that two minutes. Give respect for why we're able to do this right now, or we're able to have the freedoms that we do. I know there's constitutional rights. I know there's protests. I know there's racial problems in this country, and they get heated up. But to me, I got to draw the line somewhere. And I was just in a position, being that it was out of my county, my guys were working there, that I wasn't going to compromise the safety of the citizens up there. If it was here, it might have been a different situation, because I would never pull my officers to protect anybody for a personal belief that I had. But it was just something that I felt so strongly about, not about race, not about police. This was about our veterans and about what our country's about and the freedoms we enjoy here. So, thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
Anna, please.
My name's Linda Sheridan. My address is 6133 Spelthers Road in this whole township. I came in a couple years back. When they put the sewer system down our road, my house started flooding. Never flooded before. And I have got constant water in there even now. Let me back up one step. After I came and dealt with you folks and the engineers came out and looked and didn't know what to do, I got involved with the TIP program. And praise the Lord, they brought me a furnace. I am so grateful for the TIP program. But I still have water in the basement that's breeding flies and mosquitoes. My house is full of these things, and they can bring disease. And the roof is still caving in. So, I don't know what more to do. I made calls and calls and calls to the TIP program and never gotten any response. But whatever happens, I can't live with this water in my house. Those mosquitoes carry disease, and I'm afraid...
I think I can talk to you after the meeting.
Okay, Phil.
Phil? I'm sorry. I'm looking at you, Phil.
It's bad as blue. It's good as new.
Thank you for your time.
Anyone else? We're in trouble. The judge is here.
Plus, I brought backup.
You brought backup. Oh, my God. Should we leave? Judge, we're just wrapping up public response. Do you have something you'd like to...
Yes, I'd like to. Come on up. We do Community Cup. We've been doing Community Cup for the past four years. And the first year we did it, we won, and we moved up a division. This was our, this year's team shirt. The staff designed it.
Good deal.
So, and this is Andy Booth, and Andre Elliott is here. Our chairs. They've been our chairs for the past three years. And I'm going to have them give a little presentation about what happened this year.
Oh, well, thank you, Judge. I don't know if any of you ever participated in the Community Cup or if you're aware of exactly what goes on. It's an initiative to increase health awareness throughout the county. So, the Y, they put this on, they reach out to many other agencies. And so, when we first got on board, we thought this was a great thing to do. We had a really good time competing, and we got used to winning really quickly. Our first year in, we got first place, and we said, "Okay, we're going for the crown again next year." So, for the next two years, we put our teams together, and we didn't get quite where we wanted to. And so, this year, we really put an effort together to really compete. And it started with our weight loss challenge. We got on the meltdown team. We put in like five teams, and three of those took first place, second place, and third place. And through this process, not only are we taking care of our bodies, but we're building team camaraderie, and that's what we did. In every single event, we're cheering each other on. We get volunteer support, which we get points for that as well. We always lead in the volunteer category because we show so much support throughout the community, not just in the Community Cup, but also other events, some of the walks that the county has that they put on. We participate in all of those things. And through the process, we were able to bring home the crown this year, so we're extremely excited. We get our name on here. We get some bragging rights for the rest of the year.
Thank you, Judge, for coming. When I was over there, about a week and a half or two weeks ago, that's when I found out about the cup. And I would ask the judge and her staff next year when we start our wellness program, if they can kind of help us along as we start something. And I would love to see a lot of departments in the county do the same thing.
Enjoy.
It was a lot of fun.
Judge, I don't know exactly what events are in the Community Cup now, but, you know, 20 years ago, when I was in, worked at Thomas Steel, you know, we were, the community always had a huge, I mean, it was huge. All the businesses would enter, you know, Copper Weld and WCI, Thomas Steel, all of them. And we would, I mean, it got brutal.
It did.
I mean, we had tug-of-war contests. We had softball contests, flag football. I mean, everybody was out for blood. I mean, it was, it was pretty wild. And we were able to bring home, you know, a couple of event trophies, but not like that. It was pretty nice. Mahoney County actually participated. We had about three years.
Right. I think the auditor's off the table.
Yeah, they did. They ran it for the whole, the whole county. But now that we're going to be a part of the Y, you guys enjoy now. Are you members?
We're, some of us are members. Some of us are members through Creekside, because they have the two memberships, the Creekside and the Y. But I'd like to see some of the other departments put a team together, and we'll challenge you.
We challenge you.
We have an old staff.
Judge, our standing challenge is tutus. Anthony has to wear a tutu because he's like, "I better get involved with the meltdown quickly."
Oh, yeah. Ramon Quay, who works for us, he lost 30-plus pounds, and that was basically the winner, except for one person from the Youngstown city lost 60.
Well, they do it every year. Every year, Youngstown, Sarah Brown Clark does it every year. Runs it for the whole city. Because when I was a councilwoman, we did it here. We did it here. Jimmy Ram, Gina, Gina, Gina Bricker ran. I ran and walked. I'll be on the walking committee now.
You'll be the walking, but it's a lot of fun.
If you can do that, remind us.
We will. We'll come back and tell you.
If you take the lead for that, our office will put a team in.
Well, I hate to say this, because I know the sheriff said the lead even had some deputies on our team, because they consider themselves part of the JJC team. We've had prosecutors. Anyone in our building can be part of our team, is how we look at it. And so, it's not just JJC. We've had some deputies. We've had Prosecutor's Office and CASA, and some of the attorneys who do specific work down at court on those special documents. So, it's just a lot of fun. It really is. So, I encourage everyone to do it.
I was just going to tell Mr. Gensler, the different events in the Community Cup that you asked. There's bowling, golf, walking, running, biking, tug-of-war, obstacle course. There's cheerleading. There's, there's a banner you have to win, swimming. And, yeah, so there's a lot of events. And then there's weight loss, too. And this year, actually, 24 teams competed. There's three different divisions, so there's a red weight and a blue.
Now, is it all in Mahoney County?
It is.
Well, this is, but it's all local.
It's all, this is just our own Y that's involved. So, we'll be back maybe in March to see if you can put some teams together and take us on, okay? All right. We're turning down the bomb.
Andrew, Judge, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing that, we'll move on to approval of previous minutes of board meeting number 36, Thursday, September 14, 2017, and approval of bills for payment.
So, move.
Second.
Go.
Commissioner Middy O'Geady? Yes. Commissioner Traficant?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
General entries.
Motion approved, general entry number one.
Second.
Go.
Commissioner Middy O'Geady?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficant?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Traficant, CMA.
Dennis McDooley today. He's working something with the sheriff's office. And this is a travel for the Emergency Management Institute. And this is just to expand knowledge nationally and...
Thanks, Anna. Motion approved.
Motion approved travels to A.
Second.
Go.
Commissioner Middy O'Geady?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficant?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Engineers.
Patrick. Morning, everyone.
Morning.
Letter A is in agreement with Flint Environmental to do some professional services at our District 2 facility in North Lima. These are non-general funds. And letter B is in agreement with RMS Company to replace a culvert on Johnson Road in Smith Township, which is one of the roads we're repaving this year. We found a culvert that had no bottom, potentially going to cause the road to fail, so we're going to go forward placing on that. And that is also non-general funds.
Listeners.
C is in agreement with WW Construction for the Air Control Project. And E is in agreement with American Technical Construction for also that actual project.
OMB grants.
Commissioners, this is a grant to Springfield Township. We had a reach base to pick Springfield Township as one of the, one of the community development block grant awardees. And when our waiver was not renewed or allowed this year, the commissioners decided to provide a small grant to the Springfield Township to do some demolition work. And Mr. Orke came down today.
Thank you. We always pick Springfield because we're afraid of law. Don't worry.
Oh, good. I'm still the nicest big guy out there.
That's definitely true. And the hardest worker and one of the most, finest representatives.
I love serving. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Good to see you. Sheriff's Department.
Morning, everyone. This is in agreement with the Mahoney Valley Regional Council to provide GED process for our base and the justice center. This is a non-general fund issue.
Excellent.
Okay, motion approved. Motion approved agreements, letters A through F.
Second.
Go.
Commissioner Middy O'Geady?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficant?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Change orders. OMB grants.
Commissioners, this was part of our 2016 funding for the community development block grant. And we completed resurfacing of approximately four streets in the Coke Alley neighborhood, which is, I guess, where the Coke Plant used to be, according to Schrunders.
Change orders.
And it's a small change order filed out.
First.
Good morning, everyone. These change orders are for moving forward for completion of a dog shelter. Change order number three, spread excess dirt with a amount of $36,400. What's unique about this is on the north side of our building is a ravine. That ravine wasn't really functional for us to use. This excess dirt has been pushed in ravine, and it's given greater value to the use of our property there. Change order number five, when they were doing the floor, there's some cement slabs. To put down the epoxy, it has to be below 90 degrees humidity. There were several where above, so we couldn't guarantee the epoxy would stick. So, another application had to be put down. This is for an amount of $12,989. Moving on to number six, this is a good one. This is the D-Duck. A lot of people were involved in this, including Commissioner Ditzler, working with Austintown Township. When they went to try to bore under Murray Road, they ran into bedrock. They wanted to put the fire hydrant in front of the dog shelter, but it was worked out that we could put it across the street. So, this is an E-Duck of $12,000. But I understand the dogs aren't too happy. It's too far away.
They have to cross Murray Road. How many did it talk about? Just put a big sign, block the dog.
The final one, number seven, this is a change order to change the landscaping for an amount of $9,588. We're doing this to make it more maintenance-free and provide greater accessibility to the property. The original one was going to cause a lot more maintenance, getting into issues where the air conditioners were fenced off and having grass. We're putting stones down. We're changing. Originally, they're going to have trees by retention pond. We don't want leaves going in it. So, it's all benefiting us in the long run. We'll pay for themselves. After this, we're going to have two more change orders. We have one pending that we're trying to revise. We're going to have one more for a recirculating hot water pump. And we're done. It's a beautiful building. Diane will be coordinating when we're going to have a showing in the weekend.
Thanks, Julie. Appreciate your time.
Sure.
Okay, motion approved change orders.
Motion approved change orders A and B.
Second.
Go.
Commissioner Middy O'Geady?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficant?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Resolutions.
Motion approved resolutions, number one additions.
Second.
Go.
Commissioner Middy O'Geady?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficant?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
Resolutions. Commissioners, first.
This is, we had to utilize Coyote County to identify. This is a non-contractual item.
Commissioners, OMB.
Commissioners, this is the 2018 tax rate resolution. Basically, it takes all the rates that we currently have that have been adopted already by the voters. And it's a resolution that shows the amount of collection for next year.
Excellent. Excellent. Johnson Finney.
Good morning, Commissioner. This is a transfer of money, some money from accounting at our DFS side to our child support side, a non, non-general fund. Also, Commissioner, this will be in a resolution showing that I was here on time today. I had to be on the next agenda. And, and obviously, going back to the Community Cups, when, before they had to do business, work against Thomas Steel and Northside also. YMCA, YMCA won the first Community Cup, and I was a part of that team.
Bob threatened people with a gun. He was probably a police officer at the time.
That was when, that was when East High School was really prominent, a track, particularly with the girls. We built a East High School track team. We won every track event. Rudy Vesbina, who was a freshman at YMCA, he wasn't an AAU championship swimmer. We won every swimmer event.
Wow.
So, you set it up.
Well, you know, I mean, we did the same thing, you know. Ron Vesely was one of the managers of Thomas Steel when I was there, and he had a scholarship to Youngstown State this one. And he was one of our swimmers, so everybody did the same thing. So, you didn't win, Nate won, didn't you? I don't know. I don't remember. It happened every year. We planned all year long for it. I mean, it was, it was one of those things where you just couldn't wait to get back to try and beat the team that beat you last year, you know. And it got infectious, you know, that it was so competitive, you know. Back then, I have to say, too, I was like 28 years old, you know. So, it was fun to get involved in all that. Now, you know, I got titanium knees. Maybe I'll be, I'll be better in the tug-of-war, but they'll pull me down easier. So, that's, that's a great opportunity. Thanks, Paul. OMB grants.
Commissioners, items D and E are satisfactions of loan interest loans that were provided to homeowners through various economic dollars, program funding throughout the year.
Thanks, Anna. Sheriff's Department.
Notice that is a resolution for the moral case of payment of $603,000 to Block Markert Company for expenses incurred in silver streaming for purchase of inmate uniforms. We switched companies, getting a better price from this company, and it was a one-time cost that we were not aware of. Resolution G is to amend the resolution for a credit card that we got back in '05 for gasoline when our deputies were transporting out of the county in order for them to get gasoline. And now, with everything going to plastic, we need to use their credit card to purchase easy passes to get through other turnpiles. So, we need to get that changed in order to purchase those easy passes.
Thank you. All right, resolutions.
Motion approved resolutions A through G.
Second.
Go.
Commissioner Middy O'Geady?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficant?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditzler?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. All for the good of the order. Paul, anything, anything to...
Just thank you for approving that today. And we'll get busy as soon as Anna gives you the green light to go. We've got to think about all...
Anna should have her checkbook with her right today.
She probably does, yeah.
She can write you a check. Anna, you don't have a checkbook with you.
I don't have a checkbook.
Hey, Joe just got a new credit card. Maybe he can help.
Automatize it.
We didn't get it yet.
Sheriff, anything to enlighten us with?
No. No, not really. We're, we're busy.
Commissioners, Audrey just asked me where the funds came from for the Springfield Township agreement. And at one point in time, there was HUD initiative created by Mr. Jim Traficant. And a lot of the people back in that day defaulted on their loans. And at one point in time, in the last five or six years, the commissioners decided to hire A. We paid back all those loans, but the commissioners did enter into an agreement for a collection agency to try and recoup some of those funds. And if those funds were received, since our debt was already paid, those funds, we put into a program income account for special projects that you wanted to fund in the future. So, that's, it's non-general funds, and we're lucky to have them.
Thanks, Julie. Joe, or not Joe. Patrick, I'm looking at you. Pat, you're doing a great job with all the roads we're surfacing. I see a lot of projects underway.
We have a lot of projects underway. Somebody was giving me a hard time the other day. If I'm not doing enough, I'm not going to mention his name.
Well... We always, you always have to stand up, you know.
The common theme, we just had our presentations at Eastgate the other day, where all the communities in Mahoney and Trumbull and our District 6 Integrating Committee introduced the projects for next year. And the common theme is there's not enough money to do everything. And this is, you know, it's a trickle-down effect. You know, you see ODOT's projects are starting to scale down. They're doing more preventative maintenance than they are main highway construction. Same thing with us. We're putting Band-Aids on things, the townships, the cities, the villages. There's just not enough money to fix everything. And we're fortunate. Again, this year, we have a very big paving program. Austintown's seeing quite a fit right now with Murray Road corridor being done in two phases. The third phase will come in the next couple of years. Raccoon roads build out. They're starting to put the base course down. So, again, I caution people to slow down. There's exposed manholes, valves, things like that that you can't avoid. You have to expose them when we mill the road out, because we're going to put the asphalt back in. People need to slow down. I'm watching people going through these construction zones like slalom courses. They need to take it easy, slow down. There's a lot of men out there working that are in the traffic. And you don't realize how fast cars move until you're standing out there. 25 miles an hour is really moving when you're standing on the road. There's a lot of law enforcement out there trying to maintain traffic. But again, I just ask people to slow down, take it easy. It's a temporary inconvenience. The projects will be done before winter. And once they're done, I think it's going to be a field day for YPD and Austintown community and probably the sheriff on a lot of these roads with structures. So...
Well, I think it's good that you partnered with, like Anna's kind of doing all of that.
We have a lot of partnerships this year. We've partnered with several townships. We've also partnered with Sebring, City of Youngstown, you know, to get some of these projects done. And that's what we have to do. We have to have intergovernmental cooperation to help stretch our dollars. And we've done a very good job of that this year. And we're going to try to continue that with years to come.
And that's the only way we're going to make it, is if everybody works together. You can't do it on your own, whether you're a township, a city, village.
You can't do it on your own, whether you're a township, a city, village, they all have to like.
The state gets so much funding from all of those political subdivisions and the local government that, you know, it becomes more and more difficult to try and keep up, you know, so.
You can see that in the applications, that the townships don't have the money, the cities and villages don't have the money to throw towards local matches, so the scale of the projects are getting smaller and smaller, the money doesn't spend the same way it used to.
That's why the tips are so important, to try and get matching funds and additional dollars to do things differently, you know, we just have to find unique opportunities.
If you have development, the state needs.
It was crucial to make outside the box, too, and try to partner with communities to try to help stretch each other's dollars.
You know, trying to do TIDS like we're doing, transportation district, as well as the tax increment financing, just so many different ways that we can try to find to try and help, you know, all of us to work together to improve our communities, so, thank you. Judge, anything?
No, it's always good to come here and see everybody. Like, good to see Carol walking around.
Oh, isn't she amazing?
I know.
Yeah, I'm telling you, she's, she's driving her car now, too, you know, if you saw an x-ray of her foot with all the screws and pins and bolts, was that your head or was that your foot? She's amazing, though, she is absolutely amazing.
She is, it's good to have you all back.
We're, we're all back.
She's got tennis shoes on now, so she can still catch me, so I have to be careful.
I don't know if I could run in those races, well, I have a year to get.
She can walk fast enough to get us, that's for sure.
There are time for addiction, Carol, so that's one thing.
Yes.
You put down how fast you're going to walk it, and you just have to come close to your time, so it's not a speed, which is nice.
We used to, we used to practice, like, where they have it is right by my house, and we, I bring my, start practicing. We won that part bit a couple times, but.
There you go.
The city, when I was with the city, they were like hot on this, you know, they have, they have tents and everything, they have that this year?
Yeah, they have that, we have food coming in, and it's up, put it all day.
It's like a big party.
They have bounce around for the kids, music playing, it's a lot of fun, we really have to do it, because we enjoy it, we look forward to it every year, so we're happy to have Annie and Audrey doing it.
That's pretty nice.
But thank you for letting us come here today, too.
Well, thank you, we appreciate you updating us on that.
We're going to recruit the sheriff's department.
I don't know, I think a lot of big guys with guns.
Put them on a team that can intimidate everybody else.
That's my point, you know, they're running against us, you know, so.
No, they're on our team.
I don't want to cut into your story, Tom, I know. I don't know how many people caught Good Morning America yesterday, but they had the Be The Match Foundation was key, yesterday was Robin Roberts' fifth rebirth birthday.
Today, too.
It was on today, I didn't catch it today, but for those that aren't aware, Be The Match Foundation is the organization that found my wife's donor when she was going through her health issues, and her donor was inspired by the Robin Roberts story, that's how he became a donor, and they had a young boy who received a stem cell transplant from a twenty-two-year-old female who, they met for the first time on the show yesterday, and they showed, you know, the whole story, and her reasoning behind wanting to become a donor was because of the Robin Roberts story, so, it's, it's important for people to be aware of these things, but it's an organization not a lot of people know about, but it's the National Bone Marrow Registry that, that can help people in situations with bloodborne cancers like leukemia and lymphoma, and the key age is eighteen to twenty-five are the targets, because that's when people seem to have, for some reason, must be the most healthy or strong stem cells and bone marrow, so, they're trying to run these drives across universities and campuses, and Daniel, who was Missy's donor, set up Be The Match at Indiana University, where he went, and he's now Duke University Medical School in his first year, so, it's, it's a great organization, we're going to try to continue both Missy's and his legacy through trying to set something up within the next year, we're, we're in the works of trying to put this together, and it's very involved, but it's, it's something that's near and dear to my heart, and it was nice to see it on TV, you know, brought back some, some good and bad memories, but it's a great organization.
They, I, I watched this morning, and they had, Robin Roberts had a pen that they sent her that said one seventy-three on it, and that was the number of people whose lives were saved after she discussed them, you know, on, when she got her transplant was five years ago, and that's how many people joined and did it on her behalf at that one particular point in time.
I, I didn't get to see the board, but I know last year when it was on, Missy and Daniel made the board that was on Good Morning America, they showed a screen of pictures going across.
Wow.
I don't know if that was the case this year or not, because I wasn't able to, I couldn't see it yesterday, I T-voed it, but I didn't get the whole program, I only got the last half of it, but, you know, again, there's some good that came out, some bad on our side, and we're going to try to continue that, because there's a lot of people that need that, that don't know what Be The Match is.
Thanks, Bob.
Okay, Carol. Just have a great weekend, it was good to see, you know, when I saw what you did, Jerry, with your deputies, I, I respect that, I think we need to look at where, there's a time and a place for everything that we can do, and to disrespect something that our fathers were in World War II, to fight for, for us to be free, and for our children, and what our, our guys are doing now, and our women that are in the military, we need to respect what we stand for, and that's freedom. There's a lot of issues in this country today, a lot of things that could probably be resolved by people just sitting down and, and just trying to work it out and fight it out, and whatever it is, in a peaceful manner, but to disrespect your heritage, which is your freedom, I, I just, I can't get a grip on that, and I honestly thought that, and I know this will never happen, but I honestly thought that the Browns probably should have fined those guys for that. I don't think that should ever be allowed in anything public like that in that setting. If you want to have a stand, then hopefully get involved with a group that believes in what you believe in and do it outside of your workplace, because we're free. If you don't want to be free, go look at the countries like North Korea, places like that, that, and Russia, and things that the, our people are just brainwashed, so, I commend you on that.
Anthony.
I, too, echo what Carol said, Jerry, I commend for your stand and your patronage to our country, if you disrespect the flag, you disrespect our sovereignty, you disrespect this nation, and you disrespect those who fought for this country, so I'm with the sheriff a hundred percent on that. Secondly, Jerry, you had accolades the other night, I don't know if you know about it, I attended the Boardman Civic Association debate, all the local trustees, and the two incumbents, Mr. Cal Moon and Mr. Costello, certainly credited you for the consolidation of the council governments on the nine-one-one, so I just wanted you to know that, it went over very, very well.
Thank you.
And want to commend you for that, too. Sam, thank you so much for coming down here and honoring our sheriff.
Mr. Donnie Marzano, a friend of his.
The barber.
Yes, Bron, he's a member of our vote.
Great, very, very nice. And Jimmy, thank you for the update on the dog shelter, we've almost done, and we appreciate that detailed explanation of the last final housekeeping things we need to do to get that open, you worked very hard on that as well, and Judge, thanks for the challenge, community cup, we'll figure something out.
Anthony's in, all of us, he's in.
Yeah, Carol wants me out of there.
Who's in all of us.
That's all, thank you.
Thanks, Anthony. No, I, I agree with my colleagues, you know, I think it was in the sixties, Bob, huh, that when we got out of Vietnam, and there was a lot of disrespect for our soldiers coming out of Vietnam, a lot of Jimmy, you know, and anyone else that was in Vietnam at the time, and, you know, today, you know, we look back and see what a disservice that was done to our soldiers that came back from Vietnam and the job they did defending our country and our rights, you know, today, you know, we don't want to be fifty years from now talking about disrespect and trying to atone for our ways, you know, so, today we have to make sure we continue to respect the military, respect our veterans, and do the right thing on their behalf, so, I do appreciate all that you guys are doing to make light of the situation, or to bring it to light, the situation, so, thank you. And I, I will say that, that that was done at the Browns game in a, in a preseason game on opening day, you know, after Jim Brown, who was a huge advocate for a lot of racial discrimination, social rights, and different things, to discuss it with his team, with the, with the Browns team, and they came out arm in arm in the first game with the military, the police, and the Cleveland Browns, and no one knelt from the first game on, so, it was brought to their attention, and, and they did change the way they approached things, and hopefully, that would bring more focus, but it seems that, whether it's local or national, we only intend to bring out the negative side of things, we don't bring, we don't focus on the positive when things are done to make improvements, so, that is a sad situation, there's there, too, as well.
Somebody had to tell them to do that.
So the, I agree with Pat, the safety of the, the roads, make sure you slow down, I'm a culprit, too, you got to be careful, you know, you're right, twenty-five miles an hour, if you're standing in the road and somebody goes by you twenty-five, you know, it gets fast, so please watch out, all those guys wanted to home for work, homework, too, to see their, so be careful, John. That's it. And that's the motion to adjourn.
Motion approved.
Second.
Commissioner Vidio Agetti?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficant?
Yes.
Yes. Next meeting is Tuesday, not Thursday, ten AM, next week.
Oh, okay.
Tuesday, October.